He said he can do it. Drama, drama.
Good afternoon. It is officially seven o'clock, so we'll get started. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. And at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds?
Gracious God, our Father, we're grateful to be alive and in the land of the living. We're grateful, God, to be involved in an integral part of city government. We pray, dear Lord, that our conversations and things that shall be said here and done tonight will be done out of respect for positions held and like matters, same respect for those that will come forth to use the mic. I ask now, Lord, that you bless those mics, papers, readings, thoughts, things that shall be said here tonight, that it might be pleasing to you, that we might be about the good things of the city of Portsmouth. We yield ourselves to you in that direction, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of September the 11th, 2012, a regular meeting of September 11th, 2012, and a call meeting of September the 17th, 2012. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will notice a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. Unfinished business consent agenda, 12-364 rezoning use permit and code amendment. Item A, ordinance granting the request of Glenn Hampton on behalf of Entellos to modify proffered conditions approved on July 8, 1986, that restricted use of the property to only parking in order to allow a 135-foot monopole telecommunications tower at 2700 Chestnut Street. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Z1202, first reading vote seven zero. B, resolution granting the request of Glenn Hampton on behalf of Entellos for a use permit to erect a 135-foot monopole telecommunications tower at 2700 Chestnut Street. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. UP1208, first reading vote seven zero. Item D, ordinance granting the request of J. Gregory Dodd of Horton &amp; Dodd on behalf of the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority to rezone the 1300 block of South Street from GR General Residential, URH Urban Residential High, and NMU Neighborhood Mixed Use to URH Urban Residential High in order to construct eight duplex units for a total of 16 dwelling units and a density of 11.11 dwellings units per acre. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Z1203, first reading vote seven zero. Item E, ordinance granting the request of the City of Portsmouth proposing technical code amendments to the provisions of the City Subdivision Ordinance, Chapter 33.1 of the City Code, including but not limited to modifications to regulations to allow for commercial subdivisions. Vision principle: change and new directions. CA1203, first reading vote seven zero. Final adoption by electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
Okay.
We're in need of a motion. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Okay. Very good.
These items are adopted seven zero. 12-364, use permit. Item C, resolution granting the request of Glenn Hampton on behalf of Entellos for a use permit to erect a 135-foot monopole telecommunications tower at 5559 Portsmouth Boulevard. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. UP1209, first reading vote six one. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. City manager's report, 12-391, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $27,000 from the U.S. Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY1213 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department to provide training to the regional crash team. Vision principle: neighborhoods and a sense of community and pride of past. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. Just a moment, please. You can now vote electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-392, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $41,124 from the U.S. Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY1213 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department for officer overtime payments, training, and equipment purchased to assist the enforcement of alcohol-related traffic laws. Vision principles: neighborhoods and sense of community and pride of past. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-393, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $4,274 from the U.S. Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY1213 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department for officer overtime payments, training, and equipment purchased to raise seat belt usage and to reduce traffic accidents. Vision principle: neighborhoods and sense of community and pride of past. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Change it.
Let it change.
Yes, sir.
No.
It won't hurt you.
Won't let me.
Stop. Stop.
Let's break it. Okay. All right.
Huh?
All right, yes.
Okay. We're clearing it.
Clear that.
Now you can vote electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Very good.
Okay. 12-394, adoption of a resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement between the City of Portsmouth and the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth pertaining to North Pier site development costs. Vision principles: change and new directions, a robust economy for working men and women, neighborhoods and a sense of community and quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker.
Okay. Mr. Whitehurst?
Thank you, Mayor. This is very exciting, so I'll ask the city manager to explain what this is.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, Councilmembers, and Mayor. Yesterday, we had during our economic development work session, a proposal that deals with this cooperation agreement, I believe it's with the Breeden Company, to do some development on the North Pier site and also the site that we refer to as Desk, Inc. In that instance, it would be a mixed-use development with apartments that would look to go on those sites. I mean, probably to reference the work session that we had yesterday on PCTV would actually give some better information in terms of artist renderings of those developments as well. But exciting downtown, because we've got a couple of opportunities to actually develop more of the waterfront as part of Council's downtown master plan and waterfront development strategy.
Okay. Very good. I'll speak.
Mr. Mark Godalde-Gutierrezky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of Council and fellow citizens. I've been tracking City Council on a continuing basis since 1998, and citizens have often heard projects described as paying for themselves, enhancing the tax base, and reducing the burden on the private property owner. That is, those are claims that have been made frequently, and to date, they have not been fulfilled. I am pleased, therefore, to see an agreement that has the potential to deliver on all of those promises. My hat is off to the, our Economic Development Department and the Economic Development Authority, which has worked out these details. Now, what happens is, money that is generated by the sale of the properties in question goes into an escrow account, and there is an incentive grant to the developer. The incentive grant is for doing work that would otherwise fall on the backs of the taxpayers of this city. The city is responsible for site preparation, under normal circumstances, under the contracts of the past. But in this instance, the developer has taken that on. There is an agreement for compensation for that work, and in no way does it create a drag on the city's general fund. I cannot think of a more intelligent way to do this. It also fulfills the guidance, it adheres to the guidance provided to us by Ray Gindros and his company when we had the Vision 2005 Shurets for waterfront development. This looks to be a promise fulfilled. Again, my thanks to the economic development folks and the Economic Development Authority for bringing this about in this way.
Thank you. Well done, Mark. Councilman Hurtig?
Thank you, Mayor. Members, ladies and gentlemen, following on what the speaker just shared with us, the Economic Development Authority has brought us much this week. In addition to this project, which is historic and certainly makes lemonade from lemons, it develops property which we thought undevelopable in the past. Also, last night, they were able to announce that we're moving forward in a major new retail development as well on Frederick Boulevard. This would include about $40 million in new development, about 600 new jobs in our city, and about $1 million more a year on our tax rolls. Combined with this particular project that we're about to hopefully adopt, I think that speaks very, very well of the dedication of the men and women of our Economic Development Authority and of the city in bringing us these initiatives, which will go much further than, than we hope, to balance our budget, to keep our tax rate low. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully move adoption.
Very good.
Yes, sir. We have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. New business, 12-395, boards and commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of Council, there are no boards and commission announcements tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
12-396, items submitted by Councilmembers. The first item is adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 4-9 thereof pertaining to the tethering of animals deferred from the September 11, 2012 City Council Meeting. Electronic roll call, and we have several speakers. Yes. Police Chief Hargis is going to come forward at this time.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening.
Good evening.
Two weeks ago at the work session, you asked me to do some research before you took action on amending 4.9 on the City Code, specifically in addition would be Section F, where it will be, that it should be unlawful for any dog to be tethered for more than three hours cumulative in any 24-hour period. Obviously, that presents enforcement issues, and you've asked me to do some research from other agencies that have a similar type ordinance. My staff has gone back and made contact with some other localities that do have this type of ordinance in place, and from the information that was provided, we developed somewhat of a standard protocol for dealing with tethering complaints. In most cases, the animal control officer is notified by the citizen that a dog is being treated badly because it's been tethered for too long. The animal control officer will then take steps to confirm if the tethering was in compliance with the code or not, meet with the complainant, and gather as much evidence as possible, ensure that we're measuring the tethering time to determine if it exceeded the time limit as established in the ordinance. The animal control officer would also have to notify the complaint that they will be subpoenaed and as a witness have to provide testimony in court for prosecution. If there is a tethering violation, consideration will be given to a charge under State Code 3.2-6503, care of companion animals, and the reason why they use a state code is because there are additional penalties that could be assessed for subsequent violations. Takes it from a class four misdemeanor to a class three misdemeanor. Or the animal control officer may provide education with the owner on tethering code requirements and take enforcement actions should they have to return on another complaint. All the agencies reported that they do not have the resources to engage in active surveillance, therefore, they rely on citizen involvement and citizen complaints and citizens to be the witness to testify in court if needed. And regardless if we adopt a three-hour cumulative timeframe or no tethering ordinance altogether, it should be established with a public education piece to inform all the citizens of any changes that occur. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Moody?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the feedback, Chief. I think the important thing is, I know there are a lot of people in the audience that probably wanted a 100% total ban, and what we did, and I say "we" as a council that I think we're going to do, is allow some time in there for common sense issues, a three-hour limit. And I think that we also heard from some people that didn't want any ban, and they had some valid points as well. So what we've tried to do is, once again, using our common sense, is set that three-hour time limit. And I think the other thing that some people may be concerned with, I think it's good to know our police officers are certainly not going to be out looking in people's backyards, and neither is animal control. So it will rely on the public, meaning our neighbors, to make sure that animals, the dogs, are being cared for in a proper fashion, and if they are tethered for an undue period of time, to report that. So I think what we're, action we're going to be taking here shortly is, is a good approach, and hopefully, it will mean that less animals in Portsmouth are abused. Thank you again, Chief.
Yeah. Well done. Thank you, Chief. All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde-Gutierrezky, and he's followed by Ms. Sarah Preston.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of Council and fellow citizens. Mark Twain once said that if you find a dog that is starving, feed it and nurse it back to health, it will not bite you. That is the chief difference between a dog and a man. And I, in my experience with man's best friend, and perhaps woman's best friend, is that that holds true. Dogs are extremely caring creatures and make excellent household companions. So mistreatment of this animal, this breed of animal, is difficult to countenance. However, something that is done for good reasons but is done in the wrong way is not a total benefit. And as I've told you on numerous other occasions, I object to changes being made as items submitted by Councilmembers. In this particular instance, the ordinance which was distributed at the last minute in this chamber is not the ordinance that was advertised on the city's website as part of the agenda. So the public, if they're not present in this chamber and didn't get a handout as they came in, has no idea of what it is you are contemplating. And there are a lot of people who have, to coin a phrase, a dog in this fight, and their perspectives on what is appropriate may differ from the sense that you, members of Council, hold. But they'll have no voice in this decision because they didn't get to see it, and there's been no public conversation other than citizens coming in here, making statements about four weeks ago. This is an issue that will touch a lot of people in this community, and they've been shut out of the conversation. To me, that's not the way you make good law, even if your objective is honorable, which I believe it is. So I don't believe this ordinance is ready for prime time. We do have a mechanism in place for dealing with egregious abuses, and that is the animal abuse ordinance that's being amended. As the chief said two weeks ago, there are complaints that come in from citizens, and the Police Department is acting on them. So while it may not be ideal, it may well merit changing the way we do business in this regard. I think the rush is not warranted, that there should be a full discussion within the community among citizens who are affected by this, and there needs to be a period of time for an educational component to it. That's the other problem with the ordinance. It's effective immediately. There is no deferral until the word can be disseminated to the community at large. For those reasons, I object to the consideration of the ordinance at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the, the public is certainly not being blindsided by this ordinance tonight. In fact, it's been well-publicized in the media. There was a pretty lengthy discussion on it at our last public work session, and it's interesting to note, in the time that we've, I thought we should have done something last month, in the time from that point until tonight, Portsmouth has had some highly-publicized dog abuse cases due to tethering. And I think any further delay just jeopardizes more animals, and I don't think that's the proper way to go about it. We certainly aren't building a rocket ship that's got to go to Mars, but, and I think the ordinance that we have here tonight is not difficult to understand. What, what we're doing is making sure that none of these cases that were publicized last week occur again in our city. Will it eliminate all of them? No. But it will give Chief Hargis and also Animal Control at least a tool to deal with those who prefer to abuse their animals, for whatever reason. So I don't think anyone's being blindsided on this ordinance. Once again, it's had a lot of publicity.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Thanks for your concerns.
With due respect, Mr. Moody, if the articles or the news items stated that the police were unable to do anything to those who have abused the animals, I would say you do have an emergency on your hands. But what I have seen, the item you sent to me when we corresponded about this, indicated that the police, in fact, had taken action and legal process was moving forward. So I don't see it as a crisis. I see it as something we do want to remedy, but I believe the notice is inadequate. Thank you.
Point well taken. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Sarah Preston is followed by Ms. Michelle Godinez.
Good job.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Sarah Preston, and I reside at 209 Sandpiper Drive. I'm here to support legislation to regulate the tethering of dogs. I love living here. I'm very lucky to enjoy a dog-friendly neighborhood. I have two adopted dogs of my own, and I would never dream of tying them out without supervision, especially, like Councilman Moody mentioned, after seeing that story on the news a few months ago about Storm, a pit bull who hanged to death on a chain right here in Portsmouth. And just a couple weeks ago, I saw another story about a chained dog named Hope, who was just found by Portsmouth Animal Control, just a rack of bones with skin hanging over it, being eaten alive by flies. Hope, too, was chained. And these are not the kinds of headlines that I want my city of residents to be making. I'm really proud to live in a city whose public officials listen to its citizens, and I know you take to heart our concerns and that you will do what's right for our community. I think now is the time to make a difference, and I hope that you do make the compassionate decision to ban chaining. Thank you very much for taking this issue seriously.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
Following Ms. Godinez is Chris Fortes.
Good evening again, Mayor.
Sure.
Members of the Council, attendees, press, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and just as an FYI for this chaining ban and restriction. Last week, and this isn't part of my speech, so without notes, okay? Last week, a little pit bull came up to my boyfriend who was walking our dog that we've had for seven years, and this little pit bull was bit from head to toe by another animal, and she had the remains of a tether around her neck. And by the next morning, after calling Animal Control, we had to take her to the vet, and I think we've spent $530 now on this dog from the wounds, kennel cough, infection... I think we've spent $530 now on this dog from the wounds, kennel cough, infections, parasites. And so, I don't know where the dog came from, but it was apparent that she was tethered somewhere and basically just, you know, completely eaten, almost alive. We decided to keep her. Her name is Luna, so this is for Luna, okay? So anyway, I live at 3409 Dartmouth Street. I have called Portsmouth Home for about 12 years. I'm here, and I thank you both as a dog owner and a mother of three for swiftly considering an end to unregulated dog chaining in Portsmouth. Chains are prisons to dogs who thrive on exercise, play, not to mention the companionship of being part of a pack. Between my kids and the dog, or dogs now, I always have a full house, but chaining my dogs for my own convenience was never an option and isn't an option, any more than was locking my children in a closet, you know? So I can go to work for 12 hours, I'm not going to kennel them up, you know, because they're children, just like these poor dogs are sentient beings, and they're our fellow earthlings. I'm not going to do that to them, or I wouldn't own one. That's my responsibility. If I own the dog, it's my responsibility, and I expect, you know, to be taken to task if I'm going to abuse them, just like anybody else in Portsmouth. At any rate, I just believe that our city can do better, and I'm thankful, you know, that you all agreed and that you, you know, I would like a full ban, but I understand, you know, the regulation, at least it's a step in the right direction, and I'd be very grateful if that happens tonight. So, you know, thank you very much from a citizen in Portsmouth. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Good night.
Chris Fontes is followed by, and please me, please forgive me, I'm going to ruin your name, Daphne. She knows who she is. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chris.
Hey, good evening. My name is Chris Fontes, and I live at 721 Dinwiddie Street in Old Town. I'm here again to ask for a total ban on chaining. I wanted to say that I'm very happy living in Portsmouth. I've been here for three years, and it's a great city full of good people, and I know that you guys listen to what we talk about and hear and make changes, positive changes. So I really, really love the city. I really want to be a lifetime resident here, and one of the reasons is because of all the compassionate people that I see around me, all my neighbors, and I know that we stand together on a lot of certain issues. One of the issues is chaining dogs. We all understand the threat of a chained, the threat of a chained dog that breaks his chain, the cold and the heat that a chained dog can never escape, the loneliness that they feel when it's late at night and their family's warm in bed and they're outside alone, and the fear that they experience when another animal enters their yard and they have nowhere to run to and nobody to protect them. Regardless of what breed, species, or age, it's never okay to chain a dog. In order to protect a community, dogs need to be socialized. A dog that has not been socialized is a dangerous animal. And keep in mind, most of the dogs that are chained here in Portsmouth are pit bulls. I'd like you to vote to protect this city and show that Portsmouth is a community of compassionate, smart people that refuse to wait until a victim is standing before us to make the right decision. And I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Daphna, is that right?
I know who I am.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Wright and Honorable Council members. My name is Daphna Akmenovich, and I represent PETA and its members and supporters in Portsmouth. PETA is located at 501 Front Street in Norfolk. If I could, I would give you all a gold medal, not just for taking this issue with the seriousness it merits, but for putting it on the agenda swiftly. So thank you for that. I understand that you're currently considering restricting chaining to no more than three cumulative hours within 24, which is the language in Virginia Beach's code. I beg you to give additional consideration to an outright ban on unsupervised tethering of dogs, or at the very least, consider replacing the word cumulative with the word consecutive, which is how Norfolk's tethering restriction is worded. Enforcing three consecutive hours is a far more enforceable proposition than enforcing three random hours within 24. Based on the number of calls our office receives, the sad fact is that chaining is more prevalent in Portsmouth than it is in Virginia Beach. I'd like to ask those citizens who joined us this evening to support a ban on chaining to please stand up. Thank you. Additionally, people who couldn't be with us this evening, we have for your consideration several hundred signatures on a petition gathered in just the last couple of days in support of a ban on chaining. PETA has been headquartered in Hampton Roads for more than 16 years, and in that time, we have met and helped hundreds of chained dogs in Portsmouth. Most of the dogs we get calls about and visit with are chained 24/7, rain or baking sun, snow or sleet, hurricane or nor'easter. We do what we can to lessen their misery. We deliver dog houses. We give toys. We replace chains with lightweight swivel cables. We provide straw bedding in the winter, flea strike prevention in the summer, and so on. But we cannot change the bleak reality of their having to spend their entire lives forgotten, one endless moment after another, in the same bare patch, smelling the same old smells, looking at the same old things, walking the same few feet, and as you'd expect, growing more and more frustrated, and in many cases, becoming dangerous. Jurisdictions across the United States have made continuous chaining illegal, not just because it's cruel, but because it makes for dogs who are essentially ticking time bombs. A toddler named Jonathan Martin was mauled to death in Suffolk a few years back by his own family's chained dogs. That tragedy was not an isolated incident. Chained dogs are nearly three times more likely to attack than dogs who are not chained, which is in part why this cruel practice is condemned by the American Veterinary Medical Association, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the U.S. Postal Service, and many others. Just this month, we learned from one of the residents we visit on G Street that his terrier mix, a dog named Silas, was found hanging dead by a chain from the back porch. Silas had accidentally hanged himself, a common and terrible, but totally preventable death. Some of you may recall the chained dog named Storm, who died in the same terrifying way last February. And earlier this month, Portsmouth Animal Control seized the emaciated pit bull mix since-named Hope, you heard about earlier, who was seized by, who is now at the Portsmouth Humane Society recovering. Hope was found chained, a heap of bones so lifeless that authorities initially thought they were too late, a skeleton with skin draped over it, covered in flies, fleas, and sores. Because she was chained and steadily growing weaker, Hope couldn't even try to survive by escaping her area and attempting to find food or water. Less than 10 days later, two other dogs, Grace and Charlie, described as skeletons with hair and covered in scars from relentless fly bites, were rescued from misery on a chain from two different addresses. These are the dogs whose happy endings we see on the news, imagined the ones we never hear about. Please think about Hope, Silas, Storm, Grace, Charlie, Coco, Lady, Smoke, and Blacky, who you see in these pictures, and the countless other chained dogs in your city, and vote in favor of a ban on chaining for the dog's sake and for the community's sake. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for all you do for the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you very much. One question, your signatures there, the hundred, how many is that?
It's about 500.
Okay, are they all from Portsmouth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. You make a very good point about the wording in our ordinance, cumulative versus consecutive. While you were speaking, I checked with our city attorney, and he said all it would take is a consensus of council to change that word to consecutive. I, for one, think that would be the right thing to do. If we got a consensus, we can do that, Mayor, if it's, obviously, if it's four of us that are in agreement to that.
Mr. Oakesman, you want to speak to that?
Madam Clerk, has a motion been made yet?
No, we still have speakers.
Then if there's a consensus, it can be amended before being placed before you. An informal consensus would be adequate.
Okay, there's consensus. We can make that change. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Very good.
Our next speaker is Mr. Peter Rafferty. He's followed by Mr. Joe Thorpe.
Good evening, Mayor Wright and City Council. My name is Peter Raffetto. I currently live at 416 Dinwiddie Street in Old Town. I've been a Portsmouth resident for 10 years and plan on being one for many more. I'm here to support a ban on chaining dogs. Man's best friend should not be condemned to a life sentence without parole, which is what life at the end of a chain is for dogs. Dogs are loyal, clever animals, playful and active. They don't ask for much, but the least we can give them is proper care, exercise, and companionship. Our city was in the news recently because a chained, an emaciated chained pit bull was seized by Portsmouth Animal Control, barely alive, in terrible shape, emaciated and severely neglected. I hope cruelty charges are filed against the people who chain up a dog like an old bicycle and cannot be bothered to even feed her or take her to the Humane Society. Let's not wait for another dog to suffer, please. Please vote to ban chaining this evening. Thank you for your consideration and for making Portsmouth such a great place to live.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Following Mr. Thorpe is Mr. Kent Stein.
Good evening, Mayor Wright and Honorable Council members. My name is Joe Thorpe. I reside at 1625 Ward Terrace in our beautiful city of Portsmouth. I was here last month, and I had a gigantic chain that I had with me, too, at that time. I don't have it today. But I was asking you to consider a ban on chaining dogs, and I'm here tonight to thank you for taking this issue so seriously and to urge you to vote in favor of an ordinance to ban the chaining of unattended dogs in our city. No one wants to see man's best friend, a normally loving and affectionate animal, becoming terrified and aggressive. I understand that some have expressed concerns about tethering dogs to keep them from running loose. Chaining is not a solution to that when many dogs on chains actually do and can break loose, and many of those attack people and other animals when they do. Chaining is unsafe for the dogs, for children, for other animals, or for anyone. It puts our community in danger, period. Dogs belong indoors, where they're safe with their families, or if they must be outside, in a secure yard. Chaining is cruel to dogs and dangerous for everyone. Please make it illegal in our city, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kent Stein is followed by Ms. Jane Fern.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Honorable Council members. My name is Kent Stein, and I live at 209 Sandpiper Drive in Portsmouth. I moved here from Norfolk last year, and I love it here. I'm a volunteer with Churchill and Little League, and after reading about what chaining does to dogs psychologically, I'm more than ever worried, not just for our dogs in our city, but for children also. Dogs who are kept tethered can become dangerous. Last week, a mailman, I'm sorry, earlier this month, a mailman told Wavy TV 10 that larger dogs who are chained or tied down all day are more aggressive. That doesn't surprise me, since dogs who are chained are trapped in one place all day and all night, with no way to escape if they feel threatened. If they can't flee, they fight. That's just their nature. Unfortunately, that often means pain and suffering for a child. The Virginian Pilot printed an editorial in support of legislation to regulate chaining. It said, "Cities that permit unlimited tethering of dogs permit animal cruelty. Chaining a dog to a post and leaving it there restricts its movement and its ability to find shelter from weather and avoid other animals and taunting from humans. It forces a dog to live in its own filth. Some dogs suffer wounds caused by chafing from rope or ill-fitting collars. Dogs that live on chains lose the ability to socialize, become territorial, and bite more often. Chained dogs also pose problems for neighbors enduring endless barking. The Humane Society says that more than 100 cities in 30 states have banned tethering. Hampton Roads should join the list of cities seeking to limit practice. I would be an even prouder member of our city if it was the next city in Hampton Roads to limit chaining. Thank you very much for making Portsmouth a great place to live."
Thank you.
Followed by Ms. Fern is Mr. Dan Matthews.
Good evening, Mayor Wright and Council members. I've lived at 3910 Winchester Drive for five years now, and I haven't got a speech prepared, but I wanted to stand up and say that I support a ban on chaining dogs, and respectfully ask that you vote to amend the ordinance to implement that tonight. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Very good.
Following Mr. Matthews is Ms. Erica Nestler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. I am a longtime Portsmouth resident, and for the past five years, I've owned the house at 410 Glasgow Street. I wouldn't live anywhere else. I have been against the chaining of dogs since I was in elementary school and watched my brother get mauled by a Doberman Pinscher after we walked past the apartment of our property where there was this frantic chained Doberman. I'll never forget the terror in his eyes, and it's much on my mind now because living with me here in Portsmouth is my deaf 84-year-old mother who still gets around on the streets with a cane and might not make it away from a dog that attacks. I also am here to push for an outright ban because despite people's best intention, people might plan to cover their animals when there's a hurricane that's predicted, but we all know that there's a lot of unpredictable weather in this area, whether it's nor'easters or storms that just come out of nowhere. And I know law enforcement has other things on their mind than worrying about these poor animals who are trapped out in the elements, who are drowning, who are getting stuck on fences, who are getting choked on their chains, who are getting taunts from kids after school or a beer bottle at 2:00 in the morning by a feisty person that just walked out of a bar. I know, I've seen it all, and that's why I'm here to support an outright ban, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor.
How you doing, Mayor?
You said you haven't seen me in a while, so here I am about something I'm passionate about, and that's animals. Thank you so much for considering this. I would prefer an outright ban, but I understand you're going, you're definitely going in the right direction. I would encourage that if we're going to make some revisions, that possibly it says supervised time out, because this basically says your dog can be chained out for three hours, but you don't have to be watching them. You don't know when somebody's walking into your yard and beating your dog or poking him with sticks, or, like he said, throwing a beer bottle. Or another animal can come and attack it. It can't run away. You know, our instincts, just like a dog, is either fight or flight, and if you can't run away, you're taught to fight. So let's take care of our animals. Let's not have another Hope or Charlie or any of these dogs. So thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you. I talked you up, right?
Members of council, there are no additional speakers on this item.
With adoption with the suggested amendment of the word consecutive in place of cumulative.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second to adopt your latest version of this ordinance with the correction of consecutive. And you have a motion and a second.
Very good.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Okay, we've got another item here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor. I move to add an item to the agenda in reference to the Center for Community Development
Mayor, we have a motion and a second to add an item to your agenda. You're voting electronically. This addition has been adopted by a vote of 7-0.
Mayor?
Okay, Councilman Church? Yes, sir.
Thank you. May I move to that the sum of $114,359.25 be appropriated from the remaining undesignated fund balance above the policy to the community... and the city council.
Okay. Can we, Mr. Heretic?
Thank you, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. It is rare that I depart from my colleagues on matters of the budget, but tonight I have to. I want to start by saying that I think the Center for Community Development is a wonderful addition to our community. When they came to us less than a year ago, asking for a subsidy of sorts from the city, I was pleased at that time to, to make the motion to approve it. That was nearly $75,000 of your tax money to support this organization, which has supported us for 20 years. Tonight, my colleagues are moving to give them another $124,000 and to help support them further. But unfortunately, what that hasn't, doesn't do, among other things, is to eradicate a longstanding overdue tax bill of nearly $70,000. Now, when I made the motion last year to appropriate the funds, I thought at that time that those funds would help them deal with their tax bill. Despite what many tend to believe, this council cannot wave its magic wand and make tax bills disappear. We don't have that power under law. Tonight, this appropriation, in addition to the $75,000 last year, doesn't address that. No doubt, they will come back and ask for more. Respectfully, I think, as much as we appreciate the services that organizations like this provide for us, at times, I think the duty of this council is to say no. Enough. We can't simply give away your money because we think it's a good idea. I don't know, and I haven't heard, after two nights of discussion on the subject, that there is a plan for that organization to continue and sustain itself beyond January 1st of next year. For that reason, Mr. Mayor, I must respectfully dissent from this vote, and I will vote no.
Okay. Councilman Cherry?
Yeah, I just want to correct Mr. Heretic. My motion was to give them $114,000, not $124,000. It also was accompanied by the fact that an audit would be, would be done. I don't know what meeting he was at tonight, but they laid out a plan for how they would sustain themselves with this, with this money. And this is actually correcting the wrong that we made. Part of the problem that they have was curated when we cut them off from, from what they normally would have had from the city. So this is just to correct our wrong. If, if for some reason they don't make it after this, then, then that's, that's a, that's a business issue. But this one's gonna, gonna make right what we did wrong. And it's not, it's not to give me. This organization has provided housing for low-income minorities that otherwise would never have the opportunity to afford a home. And they've been doing it for 20 years. So I think it's worth a second chance to let them continue to provide that service to citizens who have nowhere else to go, to enjoy the liberties that most deserve. Take, take for granted the fact that we, we own a home or can buy a home. And this, this is a great opportunity for those people, and I want to see it continue in the city of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heretic?
In response to my colleague, I, I take his point that it's 114 rather than 124. I stand corrected. But that $114,000 is still your money, and it's our obligation to appropriate it under appropriate circumstances. Unfortunately, as I understand it, there are only two houses currently under construction. Most of what this appropriation will do is cover salaries for the organization itself. I can't support this. Now, I understand that most of my colleagues do, and I respect their, their views of this. But I know that in a city with a budget which is stretched to the limit, there are times we have to respectfully say no. And that's what I'm simply doing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehurst?
Thank you, Mayor. You can paint the situation the way you want to paint it, but the situation is, over a number of years, this organization has done a good job. They went outside of their norm and did two other structures, but a lot of political pressure, were promised certain, certain things. Then, then of course, something ended up causing them to go to, this is city, to go to HUD, making accusations that were unfounded. They put them in a political pressure where they could not sustain that. I think we need to do what's right. What's right is we need to have an organization like this that can actually provide a way of fixing houses in the community so that people have a place to live. We are at fault. We found out that the accusations to HUD were unfounded by a department in this city, not by anybody else. We've got that information. We shared it with us. We tend to ignore it. That's wrong. They did what they were supposed to be doing for us, for the city. I think we need to make sure we correct the wrong.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Booty?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add to that, I share some of my colleagues' concerns, and that's Councilman Heretic, about going forward with, with this organization. They gotta show us that their business model works. Along with rehabbing houses and selling those houses, they don't give them away, so they're, they're taking houses that would be a blighting influence to their respective communities. They're rebuilding those houses, rehabbing them, if you may, to get them back on the tax rolls so they can contribute not only to the tax base of our city, but also to the beautification of their respective communities. With that said, this appropriation tonight is not about going forward. It is about correcting a wrong in the past. So we, the city, I say we, the city withheld some funds from them that put them in a financial bind. With that said, they have to show us their, their certified audit going forward. And also, before I would support appropriating any additional money, they gotta show us that they can turn a profit and be a self-supporting organization. I will add, my colleague mentioned taxes that they owed. We asked the city manager to do some research on our behalf, and he did. And he reported back tonight, there are cities, and CCDI is a nonprofit organization, but we've been taxing them. One other city does. Virginia Beach doesn't, and Newport News doesn't. So I think we need to revisit that, too. If somebody's helping put things back on the tax rolls, we shouldn't be taxing them for doing that. We should be assisting them as long as they can turn a profit and become a viable organization. So under those parameters, I'll support it tonight. But if I, I will not give them one red dime if they can't show this council that they can turn a profit in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Members of City Council, as this is an item that has been added to your agenda, there is a part of your rules and procedures that allows the public to speak. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, at this time, there is a motion before City Council to appropriate funds for CCDI that was not previously advertised. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this appropriation.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council and fellow citizens. I am Mark Godilde Giotrofsky of 2713 Sterling Point Drive in the city of Portsmouth. As I objected to the previous item, coming in as an item submitted by council members, I state the same objection to this one. It is a complicated item. I have watched you all make sausage for two consecutive nights, and you just, with the help of your calculators, mobile phone accessories, and I thought I saw an abacus at one point, came up with the amount of money you are going to appropriate now. So that does not give me a lot of, a lot of comfort that this has been a well and circumspectly considered item. You have thrown this together at the last minute. There was no prior notice to the citizenry, not even a substitute ordinance for the one that you were bringing before yourselves tonight, and I believe it should not go forward in this form. I also support the statement that Councilmember Heretic made about the moral hazard that you have invited. When I spoke here in November of last year, in opposition to the Business Development Grant, which is the way you, you couched your support to CCDI at that point in time, they were the only community housing development organization in the city of Portsmouth. Subsequently, I understand that two additional organizations, one of them no fly-by-night, but the well-esteem Habitat for Humanity, have qualified to do this kind of work. So failure to support them at this point in time does not leave the city without options in terms of chodos. I believe it is a mistake to go forward in this fashion, and I urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Whitehurst, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, I'm sorry.
To ignore the fact that we did, that we received written and verbal information about CCDI and the city would be a travesty. We know what happened. It was not something that they did, it was something that was done to them. And I'm just telling you that we should take that in consideration and approve them to receive what they were supposed to get. My colleague is trying to say everything is black and white. There's a lot of gray, and maybe what we ought to do is ask the chairman of CCDI to come and tell us, this, this ugly story, that might do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. My name is Pat Simons, and I live in Mimosa Cove. Just like Mark, I spoke out against the 70-some thousand that was given to this organization last year. And when it was given to them, there was no good reason other than they needed some money. Well, now they need some more money. So we're gonna give them more money? I don't think so. This is our money you're giving away. And from what I've seen, if that 75,000 didn't help them, what makes you think 114 or 24 is gonna help them? I sat through that fiasco last night where that went on, they went on for 45 minutes trying to convince you that the city did something wrong to them. To my knowledge, the city didn't do anything wrong. If we did do something wrong, don't they have a right to take it to court and get, if they're owed that money? Let them go to court and get that money if we owe that, owe it to them. But as far as I'm concerned, we do not owe it to them. Last year, when you gave them 70-some thousand, I went and looked at their website, and they had on there all this stuff they were doing in Newport News and Norfolk and other cities. And all I saw in Portsmouth was one or two houses. And, and that really made me livid when I saw that, and you gave them 70,000 for nothing, as far as I was concerned, from what I could see from their website. They have some garden in the western part of the state of Virginia or something. I don't know exactly what they do. But I don't, and, and last night, they said part of that 124,000 they wanted was to fund another position, because they spent 1,400 hours. Somebody in their organization spent 1,400 hours in 2011 doing paperwork that our city required, that other, other cities don't require. That's nonsense. We can't require that much paperwork. I know our city needs some work, but not, I mean, not that much. And then, they couldn't answer, when, when the question was raised, how much is that position gonna be? Is it, and they said it was gonna be part-time, but then they said it was gonna be a salaried position. I would love to have a part-time salaried position. I mean, and then they said it was gonna be 29,000, and he was looking at his paper, no, 31,000, 39,000. Hey, I'll take a part-time 39,000 dollar a year position. So I just don't think, if you're, if you say you're, they're gonna give you an audit and, and you've required an audit to go with this money, get the audit first before you ever give them more of my tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Whitehurst?
That salary, that salary has been taken out of the, of the money we're talking about. It is not normal for an organization, Portsmouth, to require all that work for just one city, one person having to do that. That's just crazy. City manager said that we can take that out. It's been taken out.
Anybody else?
Members of Council, seeing no additional persons to come forward on this item, you have a motion before you. You're voting electronically. This item is adopted 5 to 2. Okay. Are there any other items, for items submitted by council members?
Okay. Mr. Booty?
Thank you, Mayor. While we're on the subject of taxpayer money, there's been another issue that's garnered quite a bit of publicity, and that's the issue of our former fire chief still being on the payroll. I was prepared to make a motion tonight to suspend the pay until the manager gave this council justification. I'm not gonna make that motion, I'll tell you why. Because the fire chief works for the city manager. City manager works for council. So me making a motion, I think, would be overstepping my legal bounds as a member of council. With that said, our Director of Human Resources last week furnished us with communication from the fire chief that the manager was copied on. And in that email, the man, the fire chief tendered his resignation, thanked everybody for the opportunity here in Portsmouth, and said adios. He's going to Richmond. There was no mention of any request for family medical leave, FMLA as it's called. And I learned today that there's a process called a personal transition data form that when an employee leaves, that is communicated back to Human Resources, I guess. But I understand that that was not completed. So in effect, I guess, the fire chief is still on the payroll, even, even though he's referred to as the former chief. It was well advertised in the press that he resigned, but he's still on the payroll. I'm concerned about that. Even more concerning and disturbing is the fact that we only learned about this from a former payroll employee. If it was not for this lady who ended up resigning because of her frustration over this, we would not have known about this. This is no way to be accountable for taxpayer dollars. You know, if the fire chief resigned, it's not a question whether he did a good job or a bad job. I think by all accounts, did a good job. That's not a question. Question is, as we said here tonight, why is he still on the payroll when he did not cite family medical leave situation? And the proper paperwork hasn't even been sent back to Human Resources. So in effect, still an employee of the city, and my guess is, he's still garnering vacation time and all the other benefits that they go with being a city employee. So I'm asking tonight that the city manager share with council, as well as the public, what the status is and what's the justification for the former fire chief still being paid by the taxpayers of Portsmouth. We, we need to know. We have a right to know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other items submitted by council? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
12-397, Report on Pending Items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on September 11th, 2012. There were 10 non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on September 11th, 2012. For the speakers required action by staff. David Celatine, Tony Goodwin, and Eric Martol were concerned about the Portsmouth Naval Hospital requesting changes to gates 1 and 2. Information from the Navy was submitted to the Planning Department in regards to these changes. Comments on these changes were provided to the Navy as well as a request for additional information. Sunice Johnson was concerned about property maintenance in the Cavalier Manor neighborhood. To date, the Department of Permits Inspection says- To date, the Department of Permits Inspections has issued one thousand eight hundred ninety-six violations to property owners in Cavalier Manor, and of those numbers, five hundred and thirty-four violations were for property maintenance. Tony Goodwin expressed concern over light outages in Parkview as well as the entire city. Citizens are encouraged to report any light malfunctions to the embezzment by calling the concern line at three nine three eight zero zero eight, or submitting the information through the city's website. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Randall?
Yes. I am very happy this evening. I happen to have seen my son and my granddaughter come in. And I'm very happy to see them, and I would like for them to stay. And my son is Ricardo Randall, who's an assistant administrator in the city of Newport News. He's assistant principal at the school there, secondary school. And I'm happy that he brought my grandbaby to see us in a city council meeting. And if she noticed, grandmother was quiet tonight. So, Ms. Jeremiah, will you stand, please?
Good to see you, Jeremiah.
That's my grandbaby, and she's in the third grade at Lakeview Elementary School. And I wanted her to see fourth grade. I'm sorry, I've got a grade mixed up, in the fourth grade, and we are just happy to have her here.
Absolutely. Well done. Very good, Ms. Randall. Madam Clerk?
Twelve dash three ninety-eight, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Clyde Toller.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Clyde Toller, Ten Twenty-Nine Blair Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. Tonight, I want to go back on some things that many citizens have been coming up here asking about. Let's go back to the Blue Ribbon. Employees of the city, what did we ever do? Let's go back to the school board. The money that they took from us, what are we doing about it? There's a lot of things that we need to correct that we're not doing. And now, there's about three councilmen up there doing something about it, but we've got four more caps. You need to step up and do something. We need an auditor. Look at the embezzlement that's been going on in the paper. How we know the citizen? I don't know it. I know other citizens don't know it. How we don't know that we ain't being embezzled? We need that city auditor, and stop putting it off, and let's go do what we got to do. Now, voting time coming up, and I'm going to tell you, you ain't doing nothing for me, and I hope the rest of the citizens feel the same thing. Don't have a lot to say to me now just because voting time come, but I want you to do something about these three items that you have. This is good, but so far, I see Ms. Pat Simons and more keep coming up here talking about these things, but nothing is being done. We got to move on and do something. But now, I get back to Parkview. I know who came before you, telling them to make these accusations. I went out in Parkview, I live in Parkview, I'm a past civil league president. I checked out the Navy. I don't see all this speeding, I don't see all this loud playing music, and there is no traffic block up. This is totally wrong. And I must, Steve, you was at the meeting, a young lady said her and her dog was outrunning, and the guy's doing seventy-five miles an hour, almost run over. And I asked Officer Diet, how she know that? Do she have a radar? See, you need to stop doing these things. Now, there's wounded warriors over there in that hospital with one arm, no legs, and you start messing with the Navy. That hospital, they've been good to us. And I think what the admiral need to do, in fact, I can have me with her, Captain Mass, and me with her, and request that Parkview from the main gate, F Ham Street, all the way back to Blair Street, all the way back to F Ham Street be put off limits. I mean, everybody living in those new apartments, which I hope them get, you must remember that. They said the traffic is going to be bad, it didn't happen. Put it off limits. If you don't want these guys that's been over there and gave up their life and lost limb and thing, then you don't want them coming in out that gate to go over there to that gym. Something is wrong with us. Parkview got to be cleaned up. And I want to thank the sheriff for coming out during the way with the public bathroom. He cut it down, so now you can't use that no more. And this is a good thing. This is in Parkview. I had this done before, and it's been did again. So this is great, but I want this council to look into thing that's going on in this city and citizen be coming up here. If you break the law, then let's deal with it. It doesn't matter where the chip fall. If you did wrong, let's deal with it. All right, I'm going to get back. I heard a lot about these dogs. I got dogs, I raised dogs, I had dogs in the military and everything. I never heard no one get up there and say about the little kid that got mauled and ate up to death. Kill. He wasn't chained, he was in the house. I look at the father-in-law, the two dogs jumped on him and mauled him. Now, you see, I look at that grandfather and that mother, because I wouldn't have been in the bathroom holding that dog. If that had have been, that dog killed somebody in my family, you ain't got to worry about nobody coming to take him out, because I'm going to take him out. I think you should ban all dogs from the parade, in the public gathering, and not unless he got a muzzle over his mouth and on a leash like the state require. These dogs, no, they are not doing that thing in the backyard and all, because the people turns them out at night and they come do it in mine. But I'm going to tell you, if your dog bite me, you ain't got to worry about it, because I'm going to kill him right there. I'm sorry, but that's just the way it go. You want your dog, you better keep your dog where he belong. A dog was made to sit out though, he's a beast. He's not a kid. He's a beast, and I'm not going to eat no apple dog food. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Our next speaker is Charles Whitehurst, senior.
My name is Charles Whitehurst, number three forty-two, Worthington Square. The reason I'm doing this, I won't be cut off by the mayor.
Good evening, Citizen Whitehurst.
Thank you. Mayor, you're going around the city saying that my health is bad. That's wrong. You must be a doctor, unless you have some information that I don't have. My doctors say I'm in good health. Please stop that, sir. What we should be doing is looking at things like trying to find some help for the mosquito problem in Churchland, a pay plan for general wage employees, trying to resurrect the finance committee, the social security offset upon a city auditor, do something about the underfunding retirement plan, look into the overtime by police and fire that are causing us, some people have retired seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year, the sound wall at Hunter's Point, behavioral health building, cemetery is at Fisher's Hill, a veterans program request. You know, we've been mayor now for almost, for two years, we never had an evaluation for the city employees, and this have been done. We need to plan to meet with the city council appointees on boards and commissions and make sure they understand what their jobs are. Need to have an oversight committee looking at the Craddock High School. Been almost two years, two and a half years. That's too long for a plan to not be implemented. Need to look at trying to expedite relocation of the jail, demolition of the courthouse. Need to look at the Chick-fil-A process because it's starting to turn south now, I think. Need to make sure it's going to happen. Need to look at the development of Norcom High School. It's like, we've got some good news today, that was great. And we need to plan to meet with the school board. I went to a meeting today with TWA, and they were saying, just to me, that in this city, schools are a problem, that military is told not to come to Portsmouth. I tried to say, we need to have a task force to look at what is happening in our schools. What can we do? What is wrong with them? What is right with them? Publicize what's right and try to correct what's wrong. We can say things are great, but they're not great. When the person interviewing me today tells me outright, you got a problem in your schools, we need to look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Citizen Whitehurst. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. The Vice Mayor reminded me of something during the CCDI discussion. That would have been a prime opportunity where independent auditor would have been very effective. And in fact, tonight, there was consensus among council, and I believe it was unanimous, I think I'm correct, that colleagues, that we're going to advertise for independent auditor position as soon as we can get the wording and get human resources to act on it. So I think there will be times where that position will certainly pay for itself and certainly, hopefully, put to rest some of these urban rumors that go around sometimes. Some of them are valid sometimes, but in the case of CCDI, we've talked about that and kicked that around for a long, long time, and none of us can with a hundred percent certainty say what their financial status is. But independent auditor, that would be an assignment. They could take a deep dive into it and report back to council. But just wanted to mention that, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Dolores Knight.
Vice Mayor Whitehurst, council members, city attorney, and guests. My name is Dolores Knight. I reside at thirty-three Kennedy Drive in Portsmouth. The community meeting was held on September seventeenth at Wilson High School. It was rather informative, concerned citizens with questions that were answered, but during the meeting, it was not many people that attended this meeting, which was sad. Mayor White, the next day, I got numerous phone calls and several emails about your Facebook, the posts that you had put on there from the night before. It read as, "We have a couple of good questions and concerns. We answered what we could and told them someone to follow up with them. The Tea Party showed up, their usual same drama. The good news is there was a couple of new citizens that came out. I'm always glad to see new faces." Mayor, there are several issues here with this attention that you mentioned on your Facebook. Mayor, it seems as if you were profiling speakers at your council functions and the city functions. When did you acquire a job like this? Be sure you add this to your resume. That would really be interesting. Ladies, you are speaking of target at the Tea Party. We are not the Tea Party members. This is an issue that it should be corrected. We are the members of the Portsmouth Taxpayer Alliance and proud of it. We do a whole lot of different good things for the city, like lower taxes and so forth. And maybe you should remember that you came to our meeting one time and spoke to us. In fact, it was November the thirteenth, twenty-ten, to be exact, because I pulled my records of the secretary's notes in for them, and that was the date, November thirteenth, twenty-ten. So to me, you must know and must understand, there is a big difference between the Tea Party and the Portsmouth Taxpayer Alliance. It's two different organizations totally. Want to take for instance, if you're the mayor, suppose someone called you, "How, Councilman White?" How would, you know, that make you feel? Just want you to get this and understand that we are the Taxpayer Alliance, we're not Tea Party. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farm section of Churchland. Principle of Liberty Two. A free people cannot survive under a Republican Constitution unless they remain virtuous and morally strong. Modern Americans have long since forgotten the heated and sometimes violent debates which took place in the thirteen colonies between seventeen seventy-five and seventeen seventy-six over the issue of morality. For many thousands of Americans, the big question of independence hung precariously on the single slender thread of whether or not the people were sufficiently virtuous and moral to govern themselves. Self-government was generally referred to as Republicanism, and it was universally acknowledged that a corrupt and selfish people could never make the principles of Republicanism operate successfully. As Benjamin Franklin wrote, "Only a virtuous people are capable of freedom. As nations become corrupt and vicious, they have more need of masters." Morality is identified with the Ten Commandments and obedience to the Supreme Judge's mandate for right conduct. But the early Americans identified public virtue as a very special quality of human maturity and character and service closely akin to the Golden Rule. A modern historian stated, "In a republic, each man must somehow be persuaded to submerge his personal wants into the greater good of the whole. This willingness of the individual to sacrifice his private interest for the good of the community, such as patriotism or love of country." The colonials termed public virtue. Their mind was thoroughly convinced that a popularly based government cannot be supported without virtue. The final pre-revolutionary year, Americans were trying to decide whether they had the moral capacity for self-government. This self-examination over a period of several years resulted in a remarkable reform movement which spread up and down the entire Atlantic seaboard. Many Americans became extremely self-conscious about their lack of public virtue because of non-involvement in the affairs of government. They began to acknowledge their obsession with self-interest, the neglect of public affairs, and their disdain for the needs of the community as a whole. Gradually, a spirit of sacrifice and reform became manifest in all thirteen colonies. Virtue has to be earned, and it has to be learned. Neither is virtue a permanent quality in human nature. It has to be cultivated continually and exercised from hour to hour and from day to day. The founding fathers looked to the home, the school, and the churches to fuel the fires of virtue from generation to generation. Principle of Liberty Three. The most promising method of securing a virtuous and morally stable people is to elect virtuous leaders. Are we going to elect virtuous and moral leaders? Are we impressed with those in office because of their wealth, their station in life, or some special influence which had been brought to bear on their behalf? Are we going to continue to allow elected officials to barter with each other to continue to use their position for self-interest? Are we going to allow city employees to use elected officials to promote their personal agendas? Where is our integrity? Was this virtuous and moral when the city council adopted Resolution twelve dash three twenty-five authorizing the city manager to proceed with the implementation of the downtown master plan and waterfront strategy? This resolution allowed the city mayor to write a letter to the superintendent of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, Mr. David Simons, to consider, accept, or deny the inclusion and transfer of the entire Portsmouth City Jail inmate population to the custody and jurisdiction of the authority as soon as possible. The letter goes on to say, "Considering the urgency of this request, it would be greatly appreciated if the authority would advise the city of its intent to include methodology, action plans, and implementation timeline to accept or deny inclusion of the Portsmouth City Jail population by October the seventeenth meeting." Where was the greater good expressed in this correspondence? We have many problems in our city, and they all stem from many corrupt and selfish elected representatives and the people they employ to carry out their personal agenda. Thanks for listening, and I am not in the Tea Party.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council member, city manager, and city attorney. You had on your desk this evening a letter that I had drafted from the OTBA, which I'm speaking on behalf of tonight. Of course, my name is Tony Goodwin, I reside in Parkview, here in Old Town, within the Old Town area. I reside in Parkview, here in Old Town, within the Old Town area. And "in reference to details in downtown" is basically the title of my speech this evening. And that regards to the intersection of High and Court Street, a very, very familiar and very outstanding location for business as well as a lot of other things when this town was founded back in 1752. Going back just to a shorter period of history, sometime in the late 70s, Mr. Hamberry, who was, I believe, the city manager at the time, decided that there was a time to reinvest in downtown by taking from basically Crawford Street all the way out to the original town boundary at Chestnut Street and revitalize this High Street corridor that we know today with brick paved sidewalks, coach lantern lamps, trees, and underground utilities. And of course, at the intersection of High and Court, the six familiar stoplights that hang on the side of a 10-foot pole are what we've known for now almost 30 years. So that being said, we are faced with a situation where there's a contract out, as you may have seen in my letter, that has been accepted by all parties to take the lowest bid of a company that will simply put up a massive V-dot structure similar to the one that's just been put at High and Effingham, that will simply cross those intersections, obstructing, basically obstructing the view of any historic feature on that corner, from people taking photographs of the Confederate monument to the 1846 courthouse, the Trinity Church, and also the new Kern Building. And I would not go as far as saying that it will probably eliminate the idea of having the bandstand or grandstand what you may call for the Memorial Day Parade to be able to be set up at that same intersection because of its height and the fact that there's gonna be overhead traffic signals at that intersection. So with that being said, serving as the Old Town Business Association President and taking into consideration the fact that we do have a national registered historic district since 2004, we would like to say that let's do a little bit better. Let's take it one step further and actually look at it as an aesthetic appeal to everyone's enjoyment. Knowing that there is a need for a pedestrian walk light, which we know, and at the same time, too, some improvements to those poles that have been wrapped with duct tape numerous times for probably the past six to seven years. We're saying to the tune of about $100,000, $125,000 is what the structures are gonna cost at that intersection. But to go back with something similar or at the same time, too, very reminiscent of the era of this downtown, historic downtown area, would probably not cost nowhere near as much as $100,000, $125,000. So with that being said, I would like to see that there's some dialogue being talked about to put this, slow this project down, bring it back in, take it back to the drawing board, and consider the fact that we, as commissioners on HPC and DDC, are required to bring residents into a public hearing process and let them know that we're protecting the interests of historic districts that we set forth and the guidelines that you all voted on by simply saying the aesthetics, the exterior of their residence and commercial buildings are very important to maintaining this historic district that they are in. Either it be Old Town Parkview, Port Norfolk, Truckston, or Craddock, and now, of course, the historic Downtown Business District. Taking that one step further is that you, some of you may know or recall that I made a mention on September 17th also of the plans to convert the first floor of the Montgomery Square complex to commercial, to be continued, because that is obviously not playing fair to the rules that other people surrounding that building are going to be having to face and trying to maintain their business when you have nothing but blinds or curtains to the windows of that enormous structure on that corner. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and look forward to fielding any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Good night. Citizen Whitehurst, I mean Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
Funny man. I agree with what he's saying. We have one opportunity to get it right. We need to slow the process down. You know, one of the things that we can do immediately is to start our Visitors and Tourists Bureau again. Have people to come to this city to look at things like corners of houses, like Scotts Creek, like Paradise Creek. They come here, spend money, and leave and go home and leave us some tax money here. We need to look at that. Try to make sure that we can have something going right now that doesn't cost a lot of money. I agree with you. Once we do it, like for example, where to put the courthouse, I mean, the jail? We need to make sure we're doing the right thing. Several years ago, when the courthouse was constructed, it was a good idea because all the money was federal money. After it was done, it was a bad idea. Now we're getting it off the water, hopefully. Need to make sure wherever it goes, it's the right place to go. Once you put it there, it's kinda too late. So I would suggest, I hope my colleagues agree, we slow the process down, look at it a little bit differently.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. What I would say, and Tony's been before us a few times now talking about this subject, I would, if there's consensus.
Which subject are you talking about?
Well, about the maintaining the integrity of the historic district and his concern about the lighting installations and what have you. I'd request that council be briefed by staff at the next opportunity on how we can address these concerns. They sound valid to me. I think it's realizing that our historic communities, Old Town, is an asset, and we have to maintain that and hopefully build on it. So, you know, he keeps talking, but we keep listening, but I haven't seen much action. I would like to be briefed by staff on exactly what the plans are and if they share the same concerns. Sound valid to me, if anything, we should be building on the historic community, not watering it down with contemporary fixtures. So thanks for bringing that to our attention, Tony.
Thank you.
Good. Dr. Edmonds?
Yeah, just got a question to Tony.
Yes, sir.
That's in the historic district.
Correct.
And anything that goes up and or is constructed or remodeled have to adhere to the rules and policies that govern the historic society, isn't that right?
With some exceptions to the city's infrastructure. We presently, in the HPC, we actually have a application fee after the work has been done of $250. It's free if you don't do the work. And our discussions here just recently was that that fee could and very well might increase to $1,000. And I believe DDC has the same tools in their tool chest when it comes to doing work without authorization. I do understand that they had gone before DDC to talk about this intersection, but what was submitted as an alternative was not fitting as well, nor did they agree to what they're getting, what we're getting ready to have. The basic structure of what we're looking at is the most affordable or the lowest cost, let's just be frank, cheapest way of getting out. And unfortunately, that's not maintaining the integrity of the historic district, especially by aesthetic appeal and, again, what we're upheld to as commissioners on your two historic preservation boards.
So what is it that you're suggesting happened there in a nutshell?
Suggesting now, basically, save 120, about $100, $125,000 in building the amount of structure that you're looking to do, and probably cut that in half by simply repairing and modifying what's existing there. Because what's there is six poles. What you're going to get is four on each corner with an arm stretching all the way across the street that simply blocks all views or anything that's in relation to those historic markers on each corner. And so my suggestion is simply fix the broken stuff that's there, adapt it to where it's not gonna get broken again and maintain it, but we're talking most likely a substantial savings of at least 50% or more from going and just replacing it with this massive structure that's similar to High and Effingham, which has just been replaced in the last 60 to 90 days.
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Good night.
Good night.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council and staff. My name's Steve Carroll. I reside at 3112 River Edge Drive. I have a number of things I wanna talk about tonight. This article came out in yesterday's paper, Built to Serve, concerning the courthouse. Without a doubt, our new courthouse is a beautiful facility, one that this city simply could not afford. I served on the court's advisory panel. We discharged our services March 31st of 2009, but my duty to truthfulness and transparency is never discharged. There are things in the paper that need to be clarified. I'm gonna summarize very briefly about the courthouse because there's something else I want to talk about as well. The bottom line is we signed a contract for $78 million for a new court complex. The contract, the estimate for that courthouse, was $53 million. That's a 47% premium over the estimate. This is an excerpt out of the actual report. These are not summary figures from me. That has yet to be explained. I can think of a few reasons why it might have happened. The architect lowballed the estimate. Well, I happen to know the architect personally. He's more reputable than that. It could be that the judges extorted concessions from the taxpayers of this city, highly likely. Or it could be some unscrupulous investors and politicians wanted the jail and the courts off of that site at any cost, highly possible. Couple of things to point out on this report. At the footnote at the bottom, it says, "These costs are firm through March 1st, 2011." That means we pressed the architect for accurate numbers and got them. Also in the middle of the page, it includes just about every contingency that could possibly be figured into the cost of the court's complex. And note, at the note, "These costs, like Le Mosley costs, have a project budget contingency." Even that was taken into account. So why did we spend $25 million more for this court complex than what we should have? The recommendation of the court's panel was to relocate the courts on a gradual basis because of the impact it would have on the city. The CFO presented to the panel a scenario where the Circuit Court could be moved to Port Center for $28 million, and that $28 million would have our backs to the wall. Those were her words. So now we end up with a $78 million project. No judge, past, present, or future, is worth $78 million. No judge has the right to inflict and imprison the taxpayers of this city because of their arrogance and their contempt for the taxpayers. And I'm telling it the way it is. They're not worth it. And I would have been your most vocal ally in fighting the judges. Why weren't the taxpayers given that opportunity? Now, as for $20,000 for our fire chief, the $114,000 for this CCDI, which I'm not gonna comment on because I don't have all the facts, what about the $52 million that the school board has extorted from the taxpayers of this city without authorization? It's been swept under the rug. And Mayor, I promised you, just like I promised every member of this council and a couple other speakers, it's not gonna be swept under the rug. Your meeting that you had with the superintendent, was that before or after you met with the Commonwealth's Attorney? Could I get an answer to that question? No, I didn't think so. We want answers, and this auditor is gonna give us our answers. And I hope this auditor is accountable to the taxpayers, not just the city council or the city manager. I have been very reluctant to bring this up about the courthouse. I was very proud to be asked to serve on the courthouse committee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good night. Madam Clerk, we've got one other.
Members of council. Staff has brought to my attention that there is a speaker that is requesting to speak. He has previously spoken on an agenda item, and according to city council rules, you either speak on agenda items or as a non-agenda speaker. I can let him tell you his case and you go from there, unless you don't want to. Basically, the argument is because the Vice Mayor spoke as a non-agenda speaker, he also spoke on agenda items as a citizen, that this citizen is requesting to be able to speak on non-agenda speakers. And as not being your parliamentarian, and Mr. Oakesman is, I will defer to him.
Mr. Oakesman, could you give us a ruling on that?
Citizen, thank you, Mr. Manager. The citizen has no right to speak. When Mr. Whitehurst, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, was speaking on agenda items, he was speaking in his capacity as a council member. That's very different from speaking as a citizen. When he spoke as a non-agenda speaker, he spoke as a citizen. So the citizen has no right to speak in violation of council's rules.
Okay. Thank you. Very good, very well. We adjourn.